Include the agenda item number for or public comment period. In the subject line of the mail, email, your written comment will be distributed to the planning commission and kept on file as a part of the official record of meeting. So with that, let's if you join me for the pledge of allegiance, please. Roll please.
Certainly. Please note that Chairperson Smith is absent this evening. So we have Commissioner Del Nero.
President.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Katchel.
Here.
And Commissioner Martinez.
Here.
Conflict of interest decorate. Any commissioners have any conflicts with anything on tonight's agenda? Okay, citizens communications. For the. The agenda, this is, this is a statement I'll be reading for items which are not on tonight's agenda. If you're here for one of the items which is on tonight's. Agenda, just be patient and we will get to that. We have two items. They're scheduled for public hearing, but this is an announcement for other matters. Other, excuse me, while the planning commission welcomes and encourages participation in planning commission meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes. For expression of non-agenda items, matters of the, under the jurisdiction of the planning commission and not on the post agenda. May be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the planning commission taking action on any matter which is not on the post agenda. Unless it's determined to be an emergency by the planning commission. Citizens are entitled to address the planning commission on any item, agenda item, subject to the five minute provision. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on a night and an item not on the agenda? Please come to the podium at this time. Okay, seeing none. Public comments will now be accepted through Zoom. For those participating through the web, please raise your hand to speak using the hand icon located at the bottom right of your screen. If you're participating by phone, please press nine on your phone. Names will be called in order. The requests are received and your microphone will be unmuted when it's time for you to speak. Clerk have received any public comments or email?
No, we haven't.
Do we have anybody wishing to speak?
There are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. That said, we'll now onto the consent calendar. Please read this consent calendar.
Yes, item one clerks report of posting the agenda for the regular meeting of the planning commission of October 3, 2022 was posted on September 28, 2022.
Hey, we got a short one. Can we get any action on that?
Motion to.
A second. Motion second. He's called a roll.
Yes, Commissioner Martinez.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Del Nero.
Yes.
And Commissioner Katchel.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero with one absent.
We now enter the public hearings portion of the, of the agenda. Item number three on tonight's agenda is can. Conditional use permit twenty dash zero three. This is a proposal construct on eleven thousand nine hundred square building. At three, one, one, three, East Whitmore Avenue for family pizza and bar operation. Sukie man applicant sequoia status is exempt for section one, five, three, three, two for infill development. We have staff report.
Yes, thank you. Uh, this project is for restaurant with a, a bar. It's set the near the corner of Mitchell and Whitmore. There is approximately six thousand four hundred and sixty-five square feet that would be used for family event services. Including dining, kids, video games, arcade machines and play areas. Remaining five thousand four hundred and thirty-five square feet uh would be a bar with dining area and, and pool tables. Uh, this project has been reviewed by each division of the city. The family, the pizza, the family pizza space is designed for up to a hundred and forty occupants. The bar is designed for up to sixty-three occupants. There would be a movable partition wall between the two spaces to allow for flexible use. Uh, so. Uh, staff recommends approval of the project and work to answer any questions you may have.
Any question from commissioners on this item this time?
We received an email uh in early September ahead of our September sixth meeting in which um. We, we had a, a comment and a request that this item be postponed um to allow for uh the commenter to meet with the applicant. That meeting happened and um. My knowledge their meeting has been resolved. So we're here today um. Ready to recommend approval of the project.
This was the item on the meeting we had to cancel due to the power outage, correct?
Yes, we had a power outage on September sixth and um. This item as well as the, the other item that we're hearing tonight on the El Rematito Flea Market, they're both um. They're both continued to this meeting today because of the power outage.
Well, the issue that was addressed in the letter has been taken care of.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right. If that will public hearing. Is the applicant or the applicant's representative here to speak on this matter? So please come to the podium.
Hello, how are you guys today? Hello, how are you guys today? I was just seeing the two inch part from far away. I didn't want to go too close. Um, yeah, I'm just here about the pizza parlor. It's my family's business. Uh, we've been doing it for like over thirty years here in series. And we're looking forward to moving over there. Um, the place we're in right now is just kind of small. So that's why we wanted a little bit further down. So we have more stuff to. Allegate to more of my customers and take better care of them. And um. So we just, we're just trying to do that. And I, I did meet with the meeting about the previous thing and we discussed all that. So it was squared up. Uh, about the previous detail.
Okay, any question? Martinez.
I want to turn this on. I have a question. So it says that you plan on opening at nine AM during the week. Uh, will the bar also be opening at nine AM as well?
Um, probably open a little bit later on. Yeah.
Okay.
It's just the thing is we have to prep for the day with all the food stuff and everything. It's, it's still in the process. So we're still working on it. We're still at our old location and my dad's actually out of the country. He's been gone. Uh, this December will be about three years. So he's still working on stuff over there to come back.
And your family's previous locations here in series as well?
Yes, uh, we used to be over in the Richmond Shopping Center uh where the vet offices. And then we ended up moving in two thousand thirteen to our new location where we went to. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot, you guys.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience want to speak on this matter? Please come to the podium. If no one in here wants to speak on the pizza facility? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. I stand corrected. We reopen it. Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak?
There are no hands raised at this time, but thanks for checking.
Thanks for the reminder. You knew that. But thank you. Now we'll close the public hearing and bring a commission for discussion and or motion.
I'll make the, make the motion. I'll make a motion that this uh. Project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to secret guidelines fifteen thirty-two, class thirty-two. And approval of twenty zero three cup. Subject to findings and conditions contained in the attachment, the attached draft resolution. EC twenty-two, twenty-one.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
The motion second clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Del Nero.
Hi.
Commissioner Martinez.
Hi.
Commissioner Katchel.
Hi.
And Commissioner Johnson.
Hi.
Motion passes four zero with one absent.
Thank you very much, sir, and good luck with your business. And we'll move to the item which I think everybody's here for. This item is item number four on our agenda. This is conditional use permit. Thirteen dash twelve amendment. This is a proposal to consider extension of a conditional use permit for El Ramatito. Flea market located at three oh two, five and three, one, one, three, Crow's Landing Road. Staff report, please.
Uh, the planning commission most recently approved an amendment to the conditional use permit for El Rematito Flea Market in September twenty twenty. Uh, to allow the market to operate for a period of two years. Uh, the conditional, the condition of approval states that the, the permit would be valid for a period of two years and then the city would review the project. And the planning commission would determine whether to extend and or modify the conditions of approval. Since it's been two years since the amendment, um, the staff has repair, has prepared this report for the planning commission's review. Over the past year, the, the city staff recently uh received complaints regarding dust that was generated for vehicles parking on the dirt lot. Adjacent to and west of the flea market uh parking lot. But this dirt lot is also owned by the same owner of the El Rematito Flea Market. But the dirt lot's not part of the conditional use permit for the flea market. It's not within the boundaries of that permit. Um, therefore attendees and vendors um of the flea market are not permitted to park on the dirt lot to access the flea market. So staff notify the property owner in a letter um in July. And after receiving the letter, um, the owner of El Rematito. Um, caused the parking at the dirt lot to be blocked off in order to satisfy the immediate issue of dust control. So that's happened and um. The, the dust problem has gone away. Um, the staff has met with um the owner of El Rematito. We had a, a productive meeting to talk about um some of the. Various things going on at the flea market and our goal is to resolve those items. Um, so the, the purpose of, of um staff's recommendation today is uh we were recommending a six month extension of the, of the use permit. Uh, this will allow us time to um delve in with the, the property owner and their, their engineer and. To find all the things that we can do to um resolve any other issues that we, that um we're looking at. So we'll have a more comprehensive update in six months. Um, but we're asking for that time to, to go deep into this so that we can. Make sure we come to a good resolution on all fronts. And that is, that, that, that's our recommendation. So. The, the, the. Uh, owner's representative is here tonight and um. Also, uh, my recommendation would be to, to hear from them for um. Again, we had a good productive meeting with them and we want to um continue working with them to resolve all issues that um. That we can find um with, with the conditions of approval and making sure that they're all being met. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Thank you.
Go ahead. So the complaint is for, from dust. Uh, is it possible it's the orchards and farmland around? Or we're, we're certain it's the parking?
The dust generated from the orchard, from parking on the dirt lot is what caused the complaint.
Okay. And then I did have one more question on uh. The conditions of approval. On section three J. Says that the applicant shall maintain a current insurance policy amount of one million dollars for the flea market. Covering all flea market activities in name from the city of series at an additional insured. Through a hold harmless agreement. Could you explain to me what a hold harmless agreement is? I don't understand.
This is a, a hold harmless language recall of, of agreements that we have with uh anyone and everyone uh to protect. City from liability and I will defer to our city attorney Nubia if she'd like to add anything more to that.
Thank you, Christopher. Can the council commission hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Martinez. So uh in response to your, your inquiry, the hold harmless is a standard uh requirement that's included in conditions of approval for these types of projects. To essentially indemnify the city that in the event there is any type of legal challenge associated with approval of the project or. Uh, conditions of approval or ongoing operations as a result of those approvals by the city. The operator or property owner will in essence defend the city in any type of legal action.
So then, once the project is completed and approved, the uh required additional one million is no longer required? Or is that required throughout?
I think they have, uh, Christopher, correct me if I'm wrong, but they have to maintain um that entire, that requirement for the entirety of the conditional, the life of the conditional use permit.
Thank you, ma'am.
I, I guess I have a question. You said you need six months to resolve issues. What are the issues that we're dealing with?
Um, one of them um. Parking. So the parking has, has a, a popularity upside has grown. So there are a lot of people that want to park in the area. And without the dirt lot, um, we need to, we need to think about um. A traffic management plan and figuring out the best way to, to find. Uh, a way to safely park people. And one of the ideas that um. Uh, the El Rematito owner and representatives have discussed with us preliminarily is to um bring back to the, to the planning commission, which again, we're not here to discuss this tonight because this would be at a future meeting. But expanding the use permit area to include the dirt lot and either um. Laying gravel or in some way improving that dirt lot to make it so uh the dust problems are not there and it's safe for people to park there. So again, that's, that's a. Something to discuss in the future, but that's something that um will take a little bit of engineer work and some time to figure out. So that's why we're asking for this six month um extension.
Okay, so, so in the meantime. That there will be no parking on the dirt lot. That's been taken care of for the time being.
That's correct.
And this is, this gives you a chance to work with the applicant and the applicant's representatives to come up with a. Long-term solution to problem caused by success of the facility. Sounds like.
That's right.
Okay. All right.
Is that one last question? Standard? Owner of the business to be responsible where people park? Is that like?
Uh, yeah, yes, it is standard for any business that um has customers to have parking for the customers. That's right.
I guess my question is. They're liable. If I, if I were to park the dirt, it would be his responsibility.
Well, when, when um. An area is used without a permit uh or creating a nuisance, then it's the, it falls under the responsibility of the property owner to um stop that from happening.
Okay, any other questions at this? Okay, at this point, we'll uh open the public hearing for public comment. And uh. Guess in this case, probably best to hear from the applicant or the applicant's representatives to start us off.
Good evening. My name is Nelson Gomez. I'm the attorney for the applicant. I am here uh before you tonight uh. In order to uh indicate to you, first of all, to answer any questions you may have. Number two, to be able to let you know what we're doing and to also to indicate to you that we are working with city staff in order to be able to um. Not only deal with the issue of the dirt law and those types of situations, but rather with a number of other. Issues that we need to resolve. The satisfaction of the city and satisfaction of the applicant with regard to the. Current initial use permit. Just, just to clarify something. The, what you have before you is what's called an amendment to the conditional use permit. It is not the conditional use, but the conditional use, although it is the current. Uh, conditions and so forth. It, it is amends the. Conditional use permit that was originally entered into between the property owner and the city of series back in twenty fifteen. That's when the applicant was asking to expand the parking facility to the current amount of parking that they currently have. So uh this amendment put new conditions, new things. Uh, primarily, the amendment was necessitated because of the fact that. The applicant had wanted to do some other additional services that they wanted to provide on the property. On different days than they were originally approved. Uh, that was not, did not take place. And what some of the potential kinds of things that they had wanted to do. With the amendment twenty twenty uh were not in fact uh done. However. The conditions we have them today are based with that amendment and we want to address uh many different issues. Uh. There are issues that date back to twenty fifteen uh regarding a vested tentative parcel map. That was supposed to be addressed. Uh. There was acceptance of the Pedro Marquez Avenue. Um, there's an area of benefit that needs to be. Set up in order to be able to reimburse the property owner for the traffic signal that is currently at gross landing. Pedro Marquez Avenue. Uh, and among those kinds of issues, we hope to be able to resolve those issues with staff. At the same time that we're addressing the complaints of dirt. Uh, you know, the nuisance of uh. Dirt being raised in the dirt lot. And I want to also point out to the uh planning commission. That the entrance or the people had been using. Or the uh dirt lot is actually located in the. In an entrance that is not within the property of my clients. It's within the property that's either in the right of way or by the city of series. Or it's owned by the property owner that's on the north side of Pedro Marquez Avenue. So, but nevertheless, that is blocked off. There's no access from Pedro Marquez Avenue dirt lot today. That will continue. We hope to be able to come back to the planning commission with a solution as. Mr. Holmes indicated uh shortly, then we are able to then uh have a, a permanent. Conditional use permit that would hopefully uh be to everyone's satisfaction and will address. The concerns that the cities, city, city of series has as well as the concerns that the property owner have with regards to the condition. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. This time or that anyone in the audience may have regards to this particular project.
Would it be fair to say that what triggered us being here tonight was the two-year review which. Showed there were some dust issues created by parking off-site. And as a part of that review. You and your client have met with the city. So we've got some bigger issues and long-term issues. We'd like to get resolved to. Get that time period. Approval off and have a permanent facility out there that's operating under conditions that everybody can live with. And that's what you're working toward. And so you are in concurrence with the six month.
Yes, we had originally asked for one year, but we understand the city staff's position that uh they would like to see a resolution of this in a, in an earlier or, or expeditious. Uh, timeframe because the, what we call the uh. High usage uh of the Rematito or where they have greater attendance.
Yeah.
Would be the period from March to May of, of the year. So therefore. We are hopeful that we are able to come to an agreement and bring something to the planning commission so that it can in fact be addressed. Uh. Before that time. So hope our, our self. Uh, the, the, the timeframe that both the staff and I worked on is try to get to you by February of this next year at the latest, hopefully earlier than. But uh, we want to address all the issues at once so that we don't come back piecemeal to you and we don't say. Want to address this issue and then come back two months later, end it again. Think that amending it uh or, or making those changes uh all at one time is most efficient.
All right, I appreciate that. And I think it's fair to say there's some public interest in the matter. We haven't seen a crowd like this since, literally since Walmart was approved fifteen years ago. So there's obviously a lot of interest in your project. I don't know what people are here to talk about or not to talk about. Anyone else have any questions for?
Yes, Mr. Gomez, I just wanted to clarify. You said the city needs to reimburse your client for the traffic signal?
Well, yeah, there is uh in the language uh of the conditional use, the conditions of approval. Back in twenty fifteen. There was uh some reimbursement that was going to be uh given to my client for some extension of water lines and so forth. That he agreed to do so with the project. Uh, and also. For an area of benefit that would be created by the city in order to be able to have uh my client be reimbursed. For the cost associated with that traffic signal. Um, it's fair to say, Commissioner Martinez, that uh my client has invested in excess of three million dollar. Since twenty fifteen in order to upgrade that particular parcel and that particular business. And is glad to have done so because I believe that we have the nicest and best equipped flea market in California.
Is there a, a, a slow season for you guys?
Uh, right now it's a slow season, but uh come the spring, it will be the high season. So we hope to be able to come with a uh. New conditional use permit uh application that would have conditions that we, both the staff. And us would participate in and would be able to come to you. Um, many of those conditions that are already in the. Additional use permit uh would remain. It's just, there's a few things that we need to be able to work uh to hopefully be able to resolve. The satisfaction of both the city as well as the applicant.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, anyone else?
Hey.
Really, thank you.
Questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from your side of the, wants to speak on the, on the matter applicant or anyone else?
I don't know. I, I understand that there's many people here in support of my uh client. Uh, I just uh. If any of them wants to speak, uh, they're welcome to do so.
Oh, yeah.
I have not, I have not spoken to any of them uh in order to have them speak uh tonight. But it's fair to say that maybe some of them would like to say a word.
Oh, absolutely. I just didn't know if you had a formal team that you wanted to present.
No, okay, not at this time. Maybe the next time we come. Thank you.
All right, now. Let me clarify and perhaps uh Nubia can help with this question. Um. Or Christopher, uh, we're here to talk about, the hearing tonight is advertised for a six-month extension. How far afield should the discussion go? Do we want to get into some of these other things that we've been talking about? Or are we just talking about? Six months? In other words, what's the scope of the hearing tonight or what should it be?
Um, staff's recommendation is a, a six-month hearing and staff's recommendation is to freeze the, the existing conditions of approval as it exists today. That's why we incorporated them by reference and make any changes. We just need more time to look through it with the applicant. And uh, and, and take the next few months to do that and come back to the planning commission.
And Commissioner, and Commissioner asked to that, that particular question as well, from a legal standpoint, uh, the project has been noticed for. A public hearing based off of staff's recommendation. So there are several categories of items that still need to be vetted and further discussed. So. That wouldn't be before you tonight as, as staff and uh Mr. Gomez have mentioned, we're still working through that. And as it relates to the conditions themselves, any changes to that have proposed changes haven't been noticed. So um. Again, uh, in terms of public comment is one thing, but action and this deliberation from the planning commission is another. So. It really is limited to what's been noticed and presented to you for consideration tonight.
Okay, thank you. So hopefully everyone could hear that. What we're doing is focusing on the six-month extension, which will allow the city and the applicant and their representative who just spoke. To discuss the future. Of the flea market operation, El Rematito, how it goes on in the future. This was triggered by a requirement in the current permit that said. Uh, we, we had to look at it after two years from its last approval. There was a dust complaint. And that has been addressed for the time being in the short term for the next six months is the recommendation. So you're all welcome to come up and speak. We have a five little, five-minute limitation per speaker. But please try to keep your focus of your, of your speak on. The issue before us, which is the time extension to six months to allow this to go into its next stage, if I've said that correctly. Makes sense. Okay, with that, anyone else wants to speak? Just come up one at a time, give your name and address and tell us what you have to say. Just come up one at a time, give your name and address and tell us what you have to say. If you're here in support of the facility, you're, you like the flea market, you want it to continue. Still doing that, the applicant and the city are. The applicant is.
My name is Rosalinda Beer. And I just wanted, I guess there are two different issues about it. I definitely think we definitely need to support the six-month extension. My only concern is making sure we're being equal in the city because the parking lot seems to be the same as St. Jude overflow parking lot. Same dust is going to be made with same people going to the church every Sunday or Wednesday and all the other days of the week during worshipings, baptisms, that kind of thing. Those, those are kind of my concerns as well. And then when, if you're on that side of town, you know, like they had mentioned already, the almond fields right there. And then Carroll Lane actually is, doesn't even have sidewalks and they have dirt driveways and dirt parking lots. So I don't know how much more dirt is coming from your own street, their own parking lot and the almond field versus just the parking at other people. So those are just my concerns, but I definitely think that, you know, I'd love to see a paved parking lot and expanded parking lot over there. I think six months to kind of address some of the issues is definitely something we should be in support of here in series. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Nadia. I own my business from my, with my husband. My English is very limited.
Could you speak a little closer to the microphone?
Let me take my, my mask off. My English is not that good, but I'm trying my best. I own my business with my husband. I, we work really hard. Since the free parking lot is being closed ourselves, it's been down. I don't know what's going on on the legal issue between you and the owners where you guys are affecting my business. So get it together, please. Get it together because it's affecting my business.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Yasmin Perez, and I just have a question for you guys. Have any of you guys visit El Rematito? Have you guys been there?
Not lately. I haven't.
None of you guys has visited? Okay, so that's a problem. I think that you guys should make your way down there because that's a very special place for our Hispanic community. As you can tell by this room, you said you had had a big showdown since the Walmart structure. So that says a lot about you guys that you guys haven't visited such a special place within our community. And it shows a disregard for the Hispanic community and their livelihoods. I want to remind you that each of you guys live in series and have constituents. The population is over fifty percent of Hispanics here and we can't be ignored. And long enough, El Rematito and their, their representatives have been bullied, I would say bullied by the city. It should be a collaboration between us and the city, especially because that place brings so much money to our local economy. And it, people's families and income depends on it. So this shouldn't, this that we're working on, they should have the six months. Honestly, it should be for longer because you guys got to think that we just went through a pandemic, right? Everybody's hurting. So why wouldn't you guys want to speed up the process of getting things figured out and work as a partnership because it brings so much to series. And often we're, we've been ignored and that's going to stop. I'm going to tell you guys right now, the Hispanic community is, is going to be here and we're going to show up. And if you guys don't start representing everybody in the city, we're going to vote you guys out. And November's coming, by the way.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jada. I came on behalf of the remate because free parking, okay? That brings a lot of customers in and it's helping the small businesses that are barely starting. Whether they were there before, whether they weren't, you know, you know what I'm saying? These people work hard every single day throughout the weekend to make their money. When you guys come sit here and get paid to be here, or you guys stay and do your guys' jobs. When these people work every single day to get their merchandise, to sell their merchandise. It's not fair to them at all. The parking takes the customers away. Charging the customers to come in, not enough parking for the customers. I'm not going to park at the dollar store to walk. That parking did a whole bunch for these people and taking it away because of a little bit of dust. Weather causes dust. The almonds cause dust, tractors cause dust, everything causes dust. What is a little bit of that parking going to do to people with the dust? If, you know, I, I don't get what the dust does to affect a lot of you guys. Like a few of them said, you guys have been there. You guys don't see the culture. You guys don't see the community, how everybody works together to be there. None of you guys see it. And that's really a sad thing to see that none of you guys are here to support them. That's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Ruiz and I'm a series resident. I also represent South Madesto Businesses United. We're a nonprofit organization that has been around for thirteen years. And I also represent another nonprofit called Nora, which is a national Hispanic organization of real estate professionals. I'm also a business owner on Cross Landing Road, seventeen hundred Cross Landing Road. And as well, I'm a consumer of El Rematito. So I come before you also asking a lot of ladies here have spoken about how it would be nice for all of you to go visit. I know Daniel has been there before. I thank you for supporting an event we had just very recently in El Rematito. We had over three thousand people come to a cultural event. And that's what we do. We, we stick together. So the time that it's going to take for the city to come up with all the solutions and his representative as well as the owner. The, the parking that was closed, if that would be dealt with sooner than later. I know that he has to come up with all the engineer work, but the fact that it closed. I, I'm also a tax preparer and I prepare taxes for a lot of clients that are not even here. And when they do their quarterlies, they're like Cynthia, ourselves have dropped to the T. Like we could barely, barely make ends meet. They have to pay their rent, they have to pay their mortgages. And it's really, really affecting the economy, not only of the vendors, but of the consumers. The consumers come from all over the Central Valley. Like Nelson Gomez mentioned, we do have the most beautiful outdoor flea market that any, any other place has, especially in California. So if you haven't been there, you're missing out. And I do, do pray that you take consideration with the business owner that has some health issues. He's not here today because this problem has completely just put him to the bottom. He has heart failure right now. We're praying for him, but his family's here, his representative is here. Myself as a resident, as a nonprofit representative of two organizations. I personally went out there, worked yesterday from seven-thirty in the morning to three o'clock in the afternoon as a community service. So I just want you to know how much impact the situation has taken upon every single vendor here and the ones that couldn't be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? No? Yes?
Hi, my name is Eric Estrada. I just want to mention that, that El Rematito is not just good for the people around the area, but we also have people coming from the Bay Area, people from Sacramento, Reno and different parts. Because the, the aim of the Rematito is it's such a nice place and everything. It's, it's all over. Us as the vendors, we take a lot of benefits from people coming from the Bay Area buying from us. And people don't want to go no more because like, like somebody says, they don't want to park, wait the heck over there, you know, and walk over there. Because it's a risk where accident could happen. Somebody could, if you drive in not paying attention, somebody can be run over or something like that. So we, we're part of this beautiful community. And we just want you to guys to take as a consideration, all of us here together. United to come and tell you guys that. All right?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? I'm aware that's going to. It's not this one.
And I forgot that, is the, the people that comes to the rematito, you know, it's not just for the good for people that we are here. It's also good for the cities, for the, the gas station, for, for all the, all the restaurants and places that can stop and get something to eat. So this is not beneficial for us, but it's also beneficial to the area for the city.
No, that's fine. Thank you, sir. I apologize for the sound system problem. I don't know what it is. We haven't been able to track it down, but doing the best we can. If nobody else wants to speak, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Commissioners, I do believe there's some hands raised on Zoom as well.
Um, I just want to say happy National Heritage Month. The flea market really supports our culture.
Did you give your name, please?
My name is Esmeralda Garcia. My husband has a business there. He runs a taco truck there. And I just want to say happy heritage, happy National Heritage Hispanic Month. The flea market brings all the cultures, cultures together. The extras parking like really helps out for all the people that come because the parking lot fills up. And it's not the parking that fills up with like the trucks that move the dust. It's the wind, like it's natural dust, you know? And I don't think it really affects this whole issue. If you guys could please open it up for the businesses because it's really affecting our business. And I'm just really thankful for that you guys gave us this time today and thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Yes, we do. We have John Osgood.
Mr. Osgood, please. Go ahead and speak, I guess. Can you, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. There's, there's a, there is, there is a delay. We have to unmute ourselves on this end. You're probably not familiar with that, but that's the process. So I'd like to ask all the commissioners and Mr. Home. Is parking in a dirt lot necessarily an unlawful activity? Seems we've closed this parking lot. It's affecting the, the financial stability of the merchants at the flea market. And that would also generate a lack of revenue to the city and, and mill taxes. Under normal circumstances, I don't see parking as an unlawful activity or driving from the parking area that happens to be dirt down an aisle way and out to the city street, an unlawful activity. When, when someone makes a complaint about a nuisance, do we know what Blacks Law Dictionary defines complaint and nuisance as? Some people don't have a legitimate right to be annoyed. I think we need to amend the, the six-month extension and allow parking in that parking lot. It's, we either function as a government or we function as a corporation. A municipal corporation is a business and has no, no authority to dictate to another business how that business functions once it's regulated. Government can only regulate commerce and industry. It cannot interfere. And it seems, seems to me that telling the business or the other corporation, you can't park your, your clients there because I don't like it or a neighbor doesn't like it is an overreach of government power. And I would consider amending the six-month extension immediately to allow for reuse of that parking area. Perhaps the owners of the establishment could put a water truck out there and facilitate knocking down as much dust as possible. This is the same thing contractors have to do on a daily basis and they could reuse that property. It's pretty much my thoughts, but I'd like someone to answer the question whether it's unlawful to park in a dirt lot or travel down a dirt road.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I have a, a name is Esme, E S M E. Go ahead and unmute your mic and speak.
Please go ahead. Esme, can you hear us?
Hello, my name is Esmeralda. And I just want to make a little quick comment. Everyone's talking about how it's affecting our business and yes, it is. It's affecting our business, but also us as vendors, we are risking to park in a faraway area where a lot of people can break into our vehicles. They could steal the most, I think it's already been about like four people that have told me that they've been trying to break into their cars and that would really hurt us as well. We love to park in the dirt area because it's taking care of our, our main transportation. And it's, it's ridiculous how it's a six months wait. Hopefully you guys can make it less and hopefully you guys could think about everybody who is there showing up and like all their families and maybe go and walk and take a nice weekend to just relax and take a look about how our community is all getting together and enjoying one place at all times. And just think about us vendors and also the business owners. And just think about everybody who loves to just come down and enjoy their weekends with their families. They love to leave their church and come and join us. And it's just hurting a lot of people's businesses and a lot of people have families to take care of. A lot of people have medical issues to pay. And you guys just make up a quick resolution of all of this. This is all we ask for. We don't want trouble. We just want access for all our customers to come in and enjoy instead of coming in and giving us complaints about this parking lot situation. And we also as vendors want to be safely and while we work. And we don't have to think about our cars getting broken into because we're just so far away that we can't look and keep an eye on them. And also the security guards won't be able to keep an eye on them. So I just want to just say that comment. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
No other hands raised at this time.
Okay, so we have no one else on Zoom. And we'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the planning commission for discussion or questions or anything else we've got.
I'd just like to mention that Mr. Home received some documentation, actually had two phone conversations a few weeks ago from Ed Vargas and Jim Duarte and copies of that correspondence have been presented at the Diaz for the commissioner's information.
They don't need to be read into the record or anything of that sort?
That's correct.
Okay.
They'll be, they'll be available for public view. Of the six months. That's correct.
Uh, if I may through chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we we can definitely bring back a discussion on that um at the future meeting. Right, right. The idea is that we'll work with the applicant and um as they submit an application and the use then we'll present that to the planning commission.
May I ask a question? Uh, it the area where the dust is is being generated is not part of the permit at this point in time, correct? So this is an off-site issue.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not subject to permit that we have now. So if they were to use that as a parking area, you add it into the permit that through the through the use permit process.
That is correct.
Okay. So their their current parking is current parking is full? Is that the situation? They're just over? This is overflow parking?
Uh, not always. It it you know, every day is different. Um, but that is something that we're looking into that we want to make sure that it the end result is that um the parking situation is improved and that's something we're working with the applicant on.
Okay, I guess I don't fully understand the parking situation, but you're still working on that.
Yeah, that's right. Sorry.
Okay.
Um, because the the lot is not part of the use permit area. We just need to work in earnest and in good faith with the applicant um towards the s- solution which which may involve um adding that dirt lot and improving it uh to make it a parking area. So right now it it's not permitted, but it's something that we want to work in good faith um to come up with solution we can.
Nubia Daniel has a question for you.
Uh, my request to the commissioners is if you can speak directly into the microphone because I haven't caught a few of those comments.
I apologize. Can you hear me now?
I can. Thank you, Commissioner.
So I want to make a motion to approve this and to give them a year's time. How would I word that for the second part so that they would have a year and not the six months?
So we're looking at extending the length of the conditional use permit. So instead of the six months, it would be 12 months. You're looking at adding um it would be a a recommendation of approval of the extension of the conditional use permit for 12 months, subject to the findings and conditions contained in draft PC Resolution twenty two tw- dash twenty-two.
Okay, so then I want to make a motion that the project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to SEQA guidelines fifteen three oh one class one and that we approve uh thirteen twelve to freeze the current conditional use permit for a 12-month period. Would that would that work, Nubia?
That will that that will work, but I I just want to clarify one point. Um, and Christopher can jump in. Uh, what this essentially does is it freezes everything in time uh for 12 months. So meaning this this in and of itself doesn't resolve the parking issue. It just means that we won't wouldn't be coming back before you to have any further discussions on this for basically 12 months.
Unless city and the applicant come together and agree that they're done.
Uh, yes, uh, staff can can work with the applicant to
And that'll be my motion.
Uh, through the chair, if I may, um, whether it's six or 12 months, um, I would I um staff's recommendation would be to have it be up to so that if we come back sooner than we present something sooner. That's our goal.
That work for you, Dan?
Yeah, that's perfect. That'd be my motion. I'm making up to 12 months.
I may open public hearing for the attorney. That be acceptable to you?
That was our original request.
Yeah.
Uh, that when I first addressed this issue, I asked for a 12-month extension. Um, primarily because uh as you've uh come to find out today, the dirt lot is not part of CUP. It's an off-site kind of uh issue that we need to address.
Yeah.
We need to determine whether we're going to be bring it into the CUP conditions, make it make it part of. One of the issues that we have, uh, and you folks are well aware of this, is uh that land use. Uh, the zoning for that dirt lot is an R four. A zoning as an R four is for multiple residential and therefore much more valuable than parking lot. So therefore we need to come to some kind of an agreement that's going to not only uh take that designation away from our clients because we don't want to go from an R four designation down to a parking lot, but maybe in a temporary scenario, we can go ahead and work out something that would in fact uh be agreeable to city staff that would provide for overflow parking in that particular area uh for uh people that want to shop at Rematito. But uh, we don't have a problem with it after 12 months. We we would like to try to resolve it sooner. But we also understand that that um in conjunction with the nuisance allegation that was the primary focus of the July twenty-fourth letter, twenty-five letter from Mr. Home to my clients. Is there many other issues that we have that are have been lingering for a period of seven years and haven't been resolved? And we're saying we must have those issues resolved in conjunction with the particular matter. And if the city takes eight months or 10 months to be able to comply with those, uh, we would, six months may not be enough. So that's why we originally had requested for a 12-month extension because we felt that was more reasonable in light of the fact that we're working uh to try to resolve it. And another thing that I want to point out to the planning commission, please understand the following. All of these people are in favor of my client's business. One person, perhaps a person that's a not a resident of the series, that whose properties may not be within the city limits of the city of series makes a complaint. Bang, we have a letter to the property owner about dirt and a nuisance. And that I have an issue with, but that's a that's something for another day and something that I will address with staff. I want to make it very clear to staff is as you can see from the response, this particular business is extremely important to the economy of series, extremely important. And it's a business that's been part of the community for over thirty years.
Yes.
Okay, and it is a business where the property owner has was originally in the county, allowed his property to be annexed to the city of series. He was under certain understandings at that time, which change with time, we understand. And we're here today in twenty twenty-two, but this particular property owner wants to continue to work within the city limits and with and be a responsible property owner of series and be a contributing uh taxpayer to the city of series, something that you perhaps are not aware of. But staff is aware I've made that information available to them, that in in city license fees from these vendors, my client pays almost on an average forty-five thousand dollars a year in licensing fees for those vendors on a year basis since twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-two. They've paid approximately four hundred thousand dollars. That's gone into the coffers of the city. So therefore that tells you that they are contributing and the kinds of things that staff is asking us to my client to be able to um make a uh available to them information and so forth. We we believe that uh we have done so and we're we'll continue to work stuff to let the city know that uh we want to work with them, but I want to make sure that it's not lost on staff, on the planning commission and on the city council. That we need to make sure that we work with this particular property owner who is very responsible because we are in a community that has a large percentage of folks who like to be able to use a Rematito as an alternative choice to be able to do their shopping and it sustains many, many families.
Thank you.
That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. It sounds like we're all on the same page as far as need to address several issues which have been some discussed in detail, some alluded to uh for the future of this facility so it can continue to serve series and the people that use it on a weekly basis. That said, we have a motion floor. We have a second for the motion. Can you the whole whole most of uh I do have it on. You may have to do the rest of it. You want to repeat it?
Sir, sir. So I want to make a determination that this project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to SECU guidelines fifteen three oh one class one. Now I would like to approve uh twelve thirteen to freeze the conditional use permit for up to a 12-month period to allow city staff and the applicant to work together to resolve these issues.
I'll second that motion. Clarify, that would come back to the planning commission with a report at least at the very least at some point, if not amendment to the permit. So okay, so we have a motion second. Have a call the roll, please.
Yes, Commissioner Martinez.
Yes.
Commissioner Del Nero.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Katchel.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero with one absent.
What that means for everybody that's here is that things will continue as they are right now. And there will be up to a year to take place between the applicant and the city to try to address all the issues that have been here to try to keep this business moving forward, which is what you're all here in support of. Thank you for coming. It's wonderful to see you here. We usually hold these meetings with maybe one or two people in the audience. It's great that the community is interested in this. We see you. We hear you. It's important to us that you're here and uh you'll hear from us again. If you have any questions about any of this, you can call the city planning department and uh ask for help there and they'll be glad to explain to you if there's something about what happened tonight that you don't understand uh or more information. Thank you. And with that, Bill. Yes. The the county zoning codes don't, the city county, city zoning codes don't allow us to do that. We don't have the authority to do that here tonight. Well, that's what's being done right now is the applicant is yeah.
Commissioner Katchel, if if we can we can we get the speaker to uh go to the podium at least? We we technically don't have
We can we can talk about about this after the meeting. The hearing's closed.
Okay.
And glad
I think this is what what was one of the biggest issues that you guys are problem for everybody for 12 months. It's great that you guys work it out, but meantime, that should be open.
We do not have the authority to open that.
So who do I speak to about that?
That's up to the applicant to come to the city to request to amend his application or his permit to expand into that. I made that request at this time, as I understand it.
Okay, so once it's amended, then we'll have a conversation about it?
It will be a public hearing if that's what they choose to do. Yes, there will be another hearing. But at this point, the applicant has not requested to do that. Okay. New business, none. Public meetings, we have none listed, unfinished business. We have none matters initiated by the planning commission and staff. Uh, we have an initial follow-up on Lazy Wheels Mobile Home Park from staff.
Uh, if I may, could we have a two or three recess?
Is this, we've still got to hear, we still got a meeting going on.
Maybe we can have a two to three minute recess. Um.
Okay, we'll take it. We'll take a five-minute recess to allow the people that are for this item to clear the room if they so choose. You're welcome to stay, but this item is finished for for this evening. Reconvene at uh seven ten. Reconvene at, uh, seven ten. All right, we'll resume, resume the meeting. Could, could you please, could you please stop talking? Cause we, we, we still have business to take care of. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. We're now ready to have the report on the initial follow-up on a Lazy Wheels Mobile Home Park, which we had under citizens correspondence a couple of meetings ago.
Uh, the following is staff's follow-up on the matter of the Lazy Wheels Mobile Home Park, and I'm going to read this. The site has been used as a mobile home park since nineteen forty-seven and it's currently zoned highway commercial. During the Whitmore Overpass Project, Caltrans purchased the property in 2010 in order to complete the overpass in 2011. In March of 2013, Caltrans sold the property to the current owner. Um, why don't I show a map of where this is at? And I'll share my screen in just a moment. Have the map up. Right, this is the, the area. It's next to the freeway. And it's next to Whitmore Avenue. Um, so I'll, I'll, I'll finish reading my, my, uh, follow-up, but this is not a discussion item. This is more of an informational item, so. Um, let me continue here. In August twenty thirteen, the planning commission declared a Lazy Wheels Mobile Home Park to be a Group B non-conforming use and established a five-year time limit to terminate the use. Although the city declared the Lazy Wheels Mobile Home Park to be a terminating land use, the city does not have full jurisdiction for home parks. The California Health and Safety Code, beginning in section eighteen three hundred, says that the California Department of Housing and Community Development has jurisdiction to enforce regulations pertaining to mobile home parks. The property owner of the mobile home park must also abide by the Mobile Home Residency Law, which is found in Civil Code seven ninety-eight. This law is enforced by HCD, which is the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Um, so this has been brief, but this is, this concludes staff's follow-up and we're available to answer questions.
This is before us, because we had a complaint a month so ago, it was?
There was a public comment and Chairperson Smith asked for a follow-up. So this is my follow-up.
Anyone else have any comments on it? We notified the. Is the, is the person that raised, made the original complaint aware of your information?
Um, I'm happy to share that and I'll be sharing this with the city council just as a, uh, informational purposes as well. Yeah.
That sounds fine. Thank you. Reports, any commissioners have anything for it?
I've got one. Uh, Christopher, if you could do a follow-up for me on this issue, I've had a citizen get my personal email and send me pictures of the uh, snow cone shack that we had voted on a while ago to not allow them, uh, access to a drive-through. Uh, that they are using it as a drive-through. I was in an email chain with city council and city manager and then in an email chain with you as well, where a citizen is bringing this to our attention. So is there anything you can look into that for us and, and give us a report on that?
Okay, uh, just, just for, um, full disclaimer purposes, uh, the, the email that you're talking about came from a member of the public. It wasn't like a, a chain email between.
Sorry, yes, yes, it was a, a citizen, uh, that got my personal emails.
Right, um, so your question was more information about what's going on in status?
I guess, you know, they're asking who would be in charge of, uh, citing that since they are operating outside of their permit. I don't, I didn't know. I didn't respond to it. I just thought I'd address it now.
Sure. I talked with the, the operator of, of Heaven Snow and she agreed to remove the menu off of the side of the shack that has the window on it. Um, and reminded her that both the planning commission and the city council have, had agreed, um, had, had voted to not allow the drive-through. Um, so she's been made aware of that.
Chairperson has nothing. City attorney, anything from you?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. We put you to work tonight, didn't we?
I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person.
So are we, but you did fine. Thank you very much for your help. City staff?
Uh, probably say this every meeting, but we're really looking forward to James Michaels returning to the office. He's, uh, been on a leave of absence and, um, we miss him dearly. So it'll be great when he, when he comes back.
That's, that you will be. Anything?
Yes, yes, thank you. Uh, engineering would like to just, uh, give you an update on the interchange, the SR ninety-nine service, service mid-road interchange. Um, currently the consultant NV five is working on a number of, uh, uh, different design aspects. We're in the process of putting out an RFP for the right-of-way consultant to start work on the properties that need to have right-of-ways secured. And we're also, uh, waiting for um, UPP, uh, railroad, UPR, sorry, UPR, Union Pacific Railroad to make a determination on the design of the inter, interchange itself. Lot of things are going to be happening in the next couple of weeks, I imagine, hopefully, looking good.
Good to hear.
And Oregon Road Improvement is coming along. They're pouring curbs and gutters. Now they are just on the part of, uh, finishing the grading and first pours are scheduled tomorrow for some of the ranchettes. They're going to receive curbs and gutters. When I have a final, all right? A final couple of comments. Uh, there is a workshop for Ochoa Park Design this Saturday at nine to eleven at Ochoa Park. It's a public, uh, workshop for, uh, giving input, uh, so the design consultant can, um, take notes and, and perhaps give us a design that the public would really like to see. Um, we handed out flyers to, uh, more than half the home in East Gate today to notify them of the, we have a workshop on Saturday from nine to twelve this Saturday, October eighth. And then we have a second workshop on Wednesday, October twelfth, five to seven. And we'll be discussing the design there with residents and taking notes. So we're looking for, uh, strong pub input. Secondly, we have another grant that we're in the, uh, process of applying for. We've done a survey on, it's an ATP, an active transportation project where we're trying to improve bicycle and pathway routes from downtown through the parks and out to Lower Bluff Park. So we're looking at, at creating a, uh, an interest in, uh, recreation and exercise, looking for synergy between getting Ochoa Park, Smirnac Park and Lower, uh, Lower River Bluff Park. So this is something that we've, we've put together. There's currently a survey for both the Ochoa Park Design and the ATP Bike Path, uh, grant, uh, survey for those people that are interested in supporting these two programs. So it is available on the website, uh, on the front, front. I guess it's the first page of the city's website. Both of them have links for the surveys, so we appreciate people, uh, actually taking a survey and we'll utilize that data to, uh, make our determinations, uh, on the design for Ochoa Park and also support the grant application for the active transportation project.
I guess that reads us, leads us to the part of the meeting which says adjournment. So we will adjourn to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, which will be held Monday, October seventeenth.
Well, I just would like to add, I concur with Christopher and cannot wait for James to return. It's been a long eight weeks and he will be back Monday morning, so it'll be a great day. Okay, thank you.
We expect to see him on our next meeting, which is October seventeenth.
You bet.
May twenty-two. We're done.